Peter's Township Planning Commission meeting in order. Ed, can we have a road call please?
Mr. Selepus will not be here. Mr. Magrino will not be here. Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Wiley?
Here.
Mr. Kartopoulos?
Here.
I'd like to see if we have any nominations for the election of chairman for this year.
I'd like to make a nomination that Jeff, Mr. Jeff Mills is chairman for 2018.
I'll second. I accept. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nomination and election of vice chairman for 2018.
I'd like to nominate Aaron Smith for vice chairman for 2018.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Ed, designation of alternate signee of lots.
Mr. Wiley does a good job of that.
Thank you.
Establishing the regular meeting date and time for 2018. I know the planning commission normally meets every, the second Thursday every month. We're proposing a slight alteration of that to make it the second Wednesday for February 2018, March 2018, and December 18th, 2018 meeting. All other months will be the second Thursday. Are you okay with that?
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good, good.
At 7:00 PM.
Correct.
Okay, the special meeting day we always do on the sec, fourth Thursday?
Fourth Thursday.
Okay. And the planning commission appointments, traffic, comming committee, who was on that?
Mr. Smith.
Staff?
I stepped down, I remember where you.
Oh, it's Conrad.
Conrad.
So, we're keeping Conrad.
Okay. No approval minutes since there was no planning commission meeting in December. Ed, any reports and correspondence?
None to bring up tonight.
Any changes to the agenda?
Well, site plans filed for review.
Oh, yes.
Site, I have three of those. Just About Farms, final plan, 48 lots on Just About Road for patio homes. Preliminary plan for Hamlet Phase 7. That's single-family homes, extension of the Hamlet Plan off of Buckingham Drive. And Juniper Woods, final plan, that's the 60 lots off of Thompsonville Road.
Ed, actually, it's a good thing. We have on the agenda here, do we need to approve the November 2017 meeting minutes? Since we didn't approve them in December?
Right. Yeah, they in there?
I believe they are.
Yes.
Okay. So, can we get a motion to approve them?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the November 2017 planning commission meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. So...
Prove our agenda.
I'm sorry.
The next items, the agenda, and I do have under, after we get done with the four items on our new business, under the planning portion, I want to, there's an issue we want to talk about relative to the Waters Senior Living Facility proposed Friar in Valleybrook. It has to do with condition number four, and I placed up there for you to review once we get to that, the conditional use decision. So, just wanted to make sure that we get to that at the end of new business.
Right. Let's move on to, any audience comments on items not on the agenda? Hearing now, let's move on to new business. Planning Commission Recommendation Final Plan, Brookwood Village Patio House, Brookwood Road.
I'm just going to give a little brief overview here, and then John Schleicher with Gibson Thomas will walk the planning commission and the audience through this plan. Cortez Builders own this seven-plus acre property on Brookwood Road. They're here tonight seeking planning commission's favorable recommendation on their final plan, submittal. This is a recommendation, the plan, if it gets through tonight, will go to council for final approval. This property is zoned, low-density residential. It's in our mixed residential overlay district. They're using the mixed residential overlay, and they're proposing 20 patio homes on 20 lots. Planning Commission approved the preliminary plan in October, I'm sorry, in June, and council approved the preliminary plan in October. So, this proposed final plan conforms to the approved preliminary plan. Real briefly, it's seven-plus acre piece of property. They're proposing 20 patio homes. The density is 2.83 units an acre. They could, under the MR, get up to six units an acre. Open space, they're setting aside 1.61 acres of open space. They're only required to set aside 0.7 acres of open space. I won't go into detail, but they, the project is subject to traffic impact fees. Gateway engineers, the township engineer has reviewed the plans and I think have okay everything.
Ready for final approval.
So, planning staff's recommending that the planning commission approve the plan subject to those seven conditions listed in my report. And that's all I have, and I know Mr. Schleicher's here from Gibson Thomas to summarize for planning commission on the final plan.
Thank you, Ed. Good evening, John Schleicher with Gibson Thomas Engineering. So, as Ed discussed, this plan was before you in June for preliminary approval, where we had pretty detailed plans at that point. Being in the MR zoning district, we went through a lot of pre-application meetings and staff meetings, and kind of came up with a good design. So, what you see before you tonight is just a, it's the exact layout as the preliminary plan with all the Is and Ts dotted, all the detail, construction profiles, utilities, stormwater management, you know, items and things like that addressed. But, just briefly, the site is approximately seven acres in size. We're proposing 20 patio home units. You see kind of the road configuration as a T shape. This portion of the roadway will connect to Brookwood Place, which I believe is also on the agenda tonight. They're about the same stage of process as us, and we've been coordinating our efforts with them to make sure we match, match the roadway there. The water line and other utilities will interconnect. Our stormwater management facility is in this corner of the parcel. And I brought the aerial view, thinking it gives a good perspective to not only the location, the surroundings, and then the plan itself. I have other, other plans if this is a little unclear in some areas, if there's any questions. Stormwater management is in this corner of the parcel, which is the, kind of the low area of the site. It's, there's extensive landscaping associated with it. The bottom will be seeded with a, kind of a wetland, a hydric vegetation mix, and then shrubs around the perimeter, and then trees more around the outside. Open space is provided almost along the entire perimeter of the site to provide a nice buffer between our neighbors and this development. And mounding is proposed along almost the entire perimeter of the site as well, except where it would conflict with sewers or storm sanitary sewers. Street trees being provided. The road design, and again, the lot design are within the MR overlay standards. So, it's a more narrow road cross-section, and that pretty much covers it. We're doing some additional mounding and have more of our open space landscaping focal point concentrated on this entire corner with the stormwater facility and the enhanced landscaping with that, and then some enhanced mounding and landscaping in this vicinity. With that, if there's, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to get an answer.
You want to mention anything?
I think it's a great plan. I like the way it interconnects with the Brookwood Plan next door, and I think it's got a lot of good buffers, a lot of good open space, and looks pretty good to me. I can't see anything sticks out.
The only question I had, there was something that said about sidewalks along both sides of the road inside, and then there's, is there some sidewalk along Brookwood as well?
Yes, exactly right. I'm glad you brought that up. So, sidewalks proposed along both sides of all plan roads, and also along this portion of Brookwood Road that will, again, connect to the Brookwood Place sidewalk, and then ultimately facilitate access to the, to the trail. And I can't think of the name of this road.
Ross Creek.
Oh, that was Ross Creek?
Okay, yeah, that's Ross Creek. There's a trail access. There's, both developer groups are using, putting the sidewalks in so folks in these two plans can walk across the street and get to the trail, and the township at some point will put a crosswalk in across Brookwood Road.
And the sidewalks as well as the roadway connect, interconnect between the two parcels as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And at this location too, will be the sidewalk connection.
Any audience comments on the plan? Hearing now, can we get a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission makes a recommendation to approve the Brookwood Village final plan.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good luck to you.
Thank you. When the weather breaks.
Okay, great. Good luck.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda is the planning commission recommendation for the Brookwood Place final plan approval.
Let me just get their PowerPoint up, and I'll just be brief again. Laurel Development Company, LP, has this property under agreement. It's right next to Brookwood Village. It's owned by the Peters Creek Presbyterian Presbyterian Church. The property is 6.4 acres. It's zoned, low-density residential. It is also included in the MR overlay district, and they are using the overlay district to lay out this proposed development with 38 townhomes. Planning Commission approved the preliminary plan in August, and council approved the preliminary plan in September of 2017. And this plan, the final plan, submittal does conform to the approved preliminary plan. Mike Wetzel's here from Victor Wetzel and Associates. I'll let him walk the planning commission and the audience through the plan. Planning staff is recommending that the Brookwood Place final plan be approved subject to the six conditions I have listed in my report.
Now, is this where the church actually is, is the church position next door?
Next door.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have a location map. Once again, Mike Wetzel with Victor Wetzel Associates, and as Mr. Zook said, we're here tonight for final approval in regard to the Brookwood Place final plans. Once again, probably help you out with your last question, you had, once again, the Brookwood Village plan that you just saw is located right along and through here. The orientation has changed. They had this more of the bottom of the screen, and the overall site area that we're looking at is located here in red. The Peters Creek Presbyterian Church is located right in through here. Brookwood Drive, Ross Creek Lane along and through here, and then you have Abbey Brook Lane and the Brookwood Manor lots along, along through that section of the, of the site. Once again, located in the R1A zoning district, and we're 6.4 acres of overall site location. Get a little bit more detail of the site. Once again, the Brookwood Village detention facility located right along and through here. There is then a existing water course that works its way along the property line, along Brookwood Road, and an existing pond that's all located on the property. This is the low point of the property, rises in elevation through here, kind of rises up slowly through here, and once again, higher in elevation to the back of the Brookwood Manor, single-family lots. In regard to the architecture, this will be, if you recall when we were here in the, I believe it was July, in August, this will be a 38-unit townhome plan. This will be, will have a combination of front-entry garages and rear-entry garages. This is the front-entry type of appearance that we'll have within these, with these units. Combination of several different brick colors, hardy plank, different colors along and through some of the buildings. Once again, the two-car garage entrance along through here, front decks, dormers along the front. Try to give it a little bit more of a modern appearance in regard to its architecture. In regard to the rear-entry garages, once again, you have the doors, windows, and as you see on both elevations, quite a few windows associated with, within the plan along the front, and using the same type of, different types of bricks and hardy plank types of materials associated with it. So, we have three types of bricks that will be used within the plan, three different kinds of fiber siding or hardy planks, different kind of roof styles associated with it, and then, once again, some fiber cement panels and window trim colors that will be used within, within the site and the architecture. Now, in regard to the, the overall site plan, as I mentioned, we have 38 townhomes associated with the plan. This is the connection over here to the Brookwood Village. Magnolia Drive will connect and create a four-way intersection with Ross Creek and Brookwood Road right along and through here. We'll also be creating a loop section in regard to the drive, and then a lane located along through here, which we have potential access to the church property in the future. Within the center of the plan, we'll have a large village green open space associated with the plan. We'll also have on-street parking along this village green along and through here. This is the rear-entry type of garages. We'll have some additional off-space parking along and through here, and also, once again, some off-space parking along through this section of the plan. Existing pond's going to remain along with the plan, and once again, the existing drainage way. The plan shows the sidewalks located on both sides of the street within the main part of the plan, and also the sidewalk connection over along through here for Brookwood Village, where is a, only one side of sidewalk located on Couso Lane through this section. In regard to the landscape plan, a relatively extensive landscape plan with landscaping along the village green area, keeping this also open for passive use and recreation use. Buffers along the residential portion on the upper portion of the site through here, and then, once again, street trees associated within the plan, as well as buffer areas along the Brookwood Village. So, not only between our buffers that we're showing along our property line, there is also the other buffers that are used for, for the Brookwood Village overall plan. So, once again, that's our, our plan in regard to the final plans for 38 townhome units for Brookwood Village. Conditions that we've seen from the township staff are all acceptable, and we're looking for the planning commission's recommendation in regard to our MR zoning district standards for Brookwood Place.
Any comments for the commissioners?
What's the rough dimensions of that green space there in the middle? You know, horizontal by vertical? Any idea?
I think it's, I believe it's about 100 square, maybe a little bit bigger. Don't have that number right offhand.
I was just trying to find it. Okay. I think it looks great.
Ed, how many, it says traffic impact fees for each PMP power trip. Is that pretty much one per unit?
Yes.
That's, that's quite a generation of impact fees for the township.
1386 times 38.
For a small lot.
Go ahead, is there a need, I'm assuming there's a need for a light there with lots here playing it off?
No. No light. Our traffic engineers here tonight.
Okay.
Mike Magrino.
I'm very familiar with that piece. I think that's just an excellent design for that piece of property, and I really am excited about this type of development for the township. I like diversity, and I think this is, I'm all in on this one. I think this is great, and I really like the idea, the way you, you're going to mix up even the roof tiles, you know, kind of get some dimension, some contrast. So, I think it's a great plan, and I'm on board.
I think with the village green actually between both developments, you know, it makes for a good space incorporating both plans, so.
Go ahead, Ted.
I'll make a motion that the planning commission recommend approval for the Brookwood Place final plan.
I'll second. Is there any commission?
Along with the six conditions recommended by the planning staff.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you. What's your time frame?
Be able to start as quickly as possible, as well as with Brookwood.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Good luck to you. Next on the agenda is the planning commission approval for Bauer School House site plan.
Thomas Robinson, Thomas Robinson Family LC is here for site plan approval for a 30 by 80, two-story addition onto the existing historical schoolhouse building at the intersection of Snyder Road on Bower, in Bowery. Building size was total of 6,120 feet for a childcare center with two synthetic turf outdoor play areas. A special exception and three variances were granted in November 2017. Adequate parking is provided with 18 spaces required and 23 are proposed. The parking lot is a one-way angled, angled lot with the ingress to be located near the front of the building, and the exit located near Snyder Road side to prevent stacking on near the intersection. Site safety is addressed with a series of five-foot sidewalks. One leads parents and students from the parking lot to the front door, and then the other sidewalk is for the grade school children getting off of the regular bus on Bowery Hill Road. A series of retaining walls are located at the rear of the parking lot in the building, not exceeding six feet in height, tapering down to two feet. A three-and-a-half-foot decorative stone mixed wall is proposed along the front edge of Bowery Hill Road to serve as protection on the front parking lot in the shield head. The addition will match the existing building with yellow brick and a pitched roof. The main entrance is to be located on the existing school, front of the existing building. The planning staff recommends approval. The addition in the proposed site plan is in character with the neighborhood, with Bauer Elementary located across the street. Planning staff recommends approval with the 17 conditions listed in my memo.
Good evening, Mike Wetzel, Mike Wetzel from Victor Wetzel Associates. Can you put it in the power?
Oh, oh, so.
Thank you. Thank you. And we're here, as Emily had mentioned, in regard to site plan approval for the Bauer School. As you recall, we were in front of the planning commission in November at your meeting in regard to the special exemption request, because under the zoning district, the school requires a special exemption, and we also needed three variances associated with, with the project. At that meeting, you had given your recommendation in regard to the variances and the special exemption of the school, and also then attended the zoning hearing board later that month where those special exemptions and variances were granted. Before we kind of really get into that, once again, site, if you recall, Bauer Hill Road located right along and through here. Access to the elementary school located along and through here. This is the existing two-story brick school, and the property area is about .9 total acres in size. We have Schneider Road located along through this section, undeveloped piece here to the top of the screen, and then access to a home that's located right along through this section. As you can see, topo lies relatively flat in regard to the front area, then it drops right along the property line, and also drops at Schneider Road along that portion of the site.
Excuse me, we're going down. Isn't the new plan, isn't there a new plan down right behind this property down the hill? It's a separate, it's a different plan? No, I know it's a different plan.
Just About Farms is to the, would be to the north.
I'll say it's along through here, and then it wraps, it wraps behind this parcel through here.
Below it, right?
Yes, below it. So, yeah, I believe it's some, I don't know, 300 feet from this property line, where the top of their site comes, comes through Just About Farms. So, no, it's not that piece right along through there. So, in regard to the site plan, at that, at your planning commission meeting in November, there were several comments in regard to, you know, parking, stacking, and other items which were taken into account in the revised site plan that you see here, but very still consistent in regard to the overall design. Access into the site will occur right along and through here. It would be a one-way system with an out located along through here, Schneider Road located in this portion of the site. And as Emily mentioned, the requirement is to have 18 parking spaces. We have 23 parking spaces added to the plan, so we have additional parking overall. We have then what's considered the bus parking and, and fire lane located along the front of the site through here, and then what we've also then added is a sidewalk all the way behind this section to all the way tie into the front door of the existing school building. Now, the new addition located back along through here will tie into the back, and will have two outdoor play areas. One outdoor play area here, the other one located right along through this section of the site. Those will be a synthetic type of turf, looks like grass, because of really what you have kids playing, western Pennsylvania weather, tell you the truth, it'll be able to take the, the abuse that's out there, and it'll really keep it as a nice, clean appearance as the front of the building, and there's also access to Bauer Hill Road. So, we have, once again, those two play areas that are separated, and will be fenced with a six-foot high kind of security fence through here. Wheel stops associated along these parking spaces through here because of the concrete walk, and then the required dumpster located right, right along through this section. Now, because of the way the site's topography is, we have requirement of some walls associated with the site. We have a main wall along and through here, and because of the requirement of a maximum six-foot height wall, we have a tiered section right along and through here, so that meets the requirements for this area, and then a smaller wall back and through here for the emergency exit from the second floor of the, of the addition. And as mentioned through Emily's comments, we also have a three-and-a-half-foot landscape wall to help kind of hide and spread the appearance of cars that are parked along that portion of, of the parking lot and Bauer Hill Road. In regard to the building elevations, very similar in regard to what you saw in November. This is the front elevation with the existing school and the addition along the rear. This is the back of the building. One change that we did do is have an access coming out of the basement area along through here for a basement, and we'll have our mechanicals in the back of the building, and we'll add the screens as part of the condition. This is the view as you're driving up Bauer Hill Road to the existing school through here. Once in the side of the addition, it'll drop along through this section. All the materials will complement the, the existing building that's there today.
And the existing building is a historic landmark?
Yes, it is.
So, you're remapping on how you can remodel it inside?
I don't think, well, I don't think there's a limit in regard to what you do. It's more of the exterior.
The exterior side.
Yes. So, and really, a lot of that work has already kind of been taking place if you've driven, driven through. The idea is the, the bell tower is going to be restored. I believe a bell is going to be restored back in that section, as well as the plaque of the original number plate.
And the materials will match, the addition will match identically to the existing schoolhouse?
As match, match as identically as you can do.
With the age of the brick.
Yes, correct. So, it'll complement, they'll complement each other. And once again, we, at the time when we're in front of you, we were seeking the, the three variances in regard to minimum lot size, building setback, and the parking adjacent to a single-family residential lot. Once again, we received zoning hearing board approval on November 21st, so all of those conditions have been met. And just to kind of finally, in regard to the landscape plan, we have a relatively extensive landscape plan. Not only is it because of where we are in regard to the school, but a streetscape appearance along the front with several ornamental trees, shrubs, and once again, the wall located right along through this section, parking along the end caps with the one-way systems in through here, plantings of evergreen trees located along this section, as well as keeping some of the existing buffer that's there today. And then, really, some of the important areas, once again, this is the front entrance to the, to the school building. We'll have a, a smaller fence located along this area with landscaping, and we'll have a, a landscaped strip between the sidewalk- a, a landscape strip between the sidewalk and the play areas, and this is where the, the six-foot fence will be. Also associated with that fence, we have boulders placed along strategically along there, just once again, as a protection of that space to, just in case of any type of mishap with the car. Once again, trying to be protective of, of both of these spaces as well as even additional landscape boulders along this front area of the site. We have some landscape buffers along and through here. There is a condition that we'll need to be adding and meet the Buffer Yard B requirement, which we'll, we'll add to the plan and make the, make the adjustments. So, once again, we're looking here tonight for final site plan approval for the Bauer School preschool and learning center. I'm glad to answer any questions the board might have.
I have a question on the, the waste area. How is a dumpster, how is a waste management going to get their truck in there? It's so tight.
Well, we have the required size and then we have the door. Once again, they're coming straight through along and through here. And really, in some cases, we'll be working with a series of different sized material to gain that. We'll be working within the off-hours. I believe one of the conditions is working in regard to the proper time of when this could occur to use the, clean up the dumpster waste.
I just wanted to say, I'm really excited to see that, I'm excited to see the sidewalks across the front. That was a, it's, you can tell it terraced the wall and the fact that you had to approach into that hillside a little bit and stuff and that's really improved with the car stops and all that. I mean, that's really improved and I really appreciate you taking those comments to heart and, and going through that. The one thing I want to say is that in our books, these are the original ones. They're not, they don't reflect what that shows on there. So, these were the prints from the original. And I was glad.
You did get the.
Yeah, we got the plan, so I was glad to see that on the real drawings it was revised. So, that, that made a big difference.
Well, I think there were some very good comments, you know, when we were here in November to really kind of refine the plan and listen to additional comments.
Yeah, the bus, the bus access and all that stuff and then, you know, having people walking in front of their cars and not down the road to get to the school is just a major safety issue, I thought. So, that's great. How many cars will easily queue in there before it clogs up the entrance? Is it three?
Well, no cars are permitted to do drop-off. That's only for, I'll say, the smaller bus that takes place along through there and, and fire escape vehicles.
Sort of like, you just says, so we're not going to have a big bus there at all?
Correct. No, no, this is just a, I'll say, a smaller bus that's used by the preschool in itself. When school students do come to the site in our bus, they'll be released right at this location where we do have that sidewalk where they're able to go right, right in.
Got you.
So.
And then to pick up, parents will not be able to pick up in that area, right? Built to park and hitchhike.
Correct. Yes.
Yeah, that's a beauty inside.
Yeah, I want to echo Mr. Clark's comments. I appreciate the sidewalk very much. I, I think that was a big concern with you all over here last time and I, I'm glad to see that it was addressed. I, I do have one question. The only thing that kind of started me looking at this plan is that there's a, the gap in the wall and it doesn't look like.
Right here?
No, no, no. At the.
Oh, right here.
Yes, and it doesn't look like the, the top, the topography changes that much. And so, I just was wondering, you know, why is there a gap in the wall?
Well, there's really, and you're correct, because we're kind of pushing ourselves away along through here. So, yes, we are at a situation where we don't need a wall.
Okay.
Here, we're probably at a one-foot wall transitions in.
Okay.
Right along through here, we're at a two-foot-high wall through this section. We can never catch up going at a two-to-one slope through here. So, it's just a.
Just a function of.
A function of the site and really just that angle that takes place over and through here.
Okay.
And then we needed to create as large of an outdoor play space as feasible through here.
Just a function of design.
Function of design.
Okay.
So. And once, you know, we still kind of, we have a guide rail that happens along this whole section. I'll say it becomes, I'll say, a little bit of a no man's land. So, because we have the guide rail in through here, this is where we put some landscaping. We also then have the fence right along through that area, so.
And I, another thought here, did our traffic engineer come up with the, what the fee's going to be?
Yes, it's, it's a big number. You want to know what it is?
It should be a big number. There's a lot of traffic going to be created there.
I don't have the exact number. Off, off the top of my head, a hundred plus, a hundred and eighteen thousand plus or minus.
I'll make a motion for the Planning Commission approve the Bauer Hills, Bauer, Bauer School House site plan from the planning staff memo dated January eleventh, twenty eighteen, subject to the seventeen conditions as detailed therein.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck.
You guys think it'll be open for next year?
Aye.
Yeah.
Okay, next on the agenda is planning commission's site plan approval for the new Peters Township High School.
The subject property is a one hundred and eighty-nine acre property at the former Rolling Hills Country Club site. This is in the L D, low-density residential zoning district. The property will be self-divided eventually for a township park on the eastern portion in the Peters Township High School would be on the western half to be bisected by a township road, right now just, just called Shared Road. They were granted, school district was granted a special exception in October two thousand seventeen for a school in the L D zone. Purpose of this evening is for site plan approval by Planning Commission, but secondly, is would be for a recommendation to council on a waiver on retaining wall height for two locations. Site plan approval is for a two hundred and ninety-eight thousand square foot high school building along with two natural turf athletic fields and associated parking lots. The site is meeting parking requirements with six hundred and seventy-nine spaces proposed and six hundred and fifty are required. Site access would not be off of East McMurray Road or Center Church Road, but however, off of Shared Road. There is one secondary entrance and two primary entrances proposed. The rear elevation will face East McMurray Road and the front will face the Shared Road. The classroom wing is located on this rear, that rear section with large windows will be a prominent feature of the facade. Building materials will be a mix of metal wall panels and brick. Color scheme would be dark red, browns, and gray. Okay, the second part of this evening is for Planning Commission recommendation on retaining wall height for two locations. Initially, area, five areas have retaining walls exceeding six feet. It's been redesigned. Three of those areas will be tiered walls. However, so two locations, the first being near the student parking lot. At the edge of the student parking lot is a wetland, so you can't tier the wall there that is needed and that would, that area would be a ten-foot variance on wall height. The second area would be near the athletic fields parking lot and that would be for a six-foot variance or departure. Planning staff recommends approval, site plan approval, for site plan approval and retaining wall height with the twenty-five conditions listed in my memo. However, today, conditions twenty-two to twenty-five were added and that was placed in front of you for a year.
So, the variance is really a total of sixteen on one.
Oh, I'm sorry. A six-foot variance on one and a ten-foot variance on the other.
I think so. They can clarify.
Yeah, once sixteen-foot total height, once twelve-foot total height, so six waiver, waiver for a six additional and a waiver for a ten additional over the six required.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have that clicker?
Yeah, yep. You good for me? There you go? Okay. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name's Chris Remley. I'm with Civil and Environmental Consultants. We're the site engineer on the project. We also have Mark Twain with Hayes Design Group. They are the lead architect on the project. He's going to get up and give you a little bit of the description of the building. We have a few renderings and different things. You, you guys can see that. We also have Dr. French and Mr. Ralph from the school district if you guys have any questions regarding any of the operations or anything of the actual school itself, so. Just a little intro. I think Emily went through most of that here. Before we get into that, just real quick, the existing, we were here back in October before the conditional use hearing and kind of gave you guys a brief overview of it, but this is the existing conditions, which is the Rolling Hills Country Club located there along East McMurray Road. Whoops. Do you want to go back? No, I was trying to get the. East McMurray on the bottom of the page here and then Center Church on the left-hand side of the page there. As you almost are probably aware, that's the existing country club with the golf course, holes on the left, the country club building there in the middle. So, here's the overall master plan to give just a kind of overview of the entire site. We have the new proposed township roadway. It can be seen.
Do you need to zoom in at all?
Well, Chris, you having trouble with that pointer?
Yes, the pointer's showing up here, but I don't see it there. But the proposed township roadway, you can see, is connecting East McMurray. There's currently a roundabout shown that is not finalized yet. That's still in process of design through another party, through the township themselves. The new township road then moves north along the page. You can kind of see it loop around and then is going to connect over into Center Church Road where there'll be, currently, there's a church there in the corner and there's kind of a really tight turn that's going, that's currently there, has some site distance issues and things. So, we're actually teeing that off with the new township roadway to where Center Church would then tee in and then the, the new township roadway would kind of move through there. So, it's a smoother movement, safer movement through there. Again, that's part of a, a separate project, but certainly a part of this project as well. The high school itself has two access points, main access points off of that. The one, and I, we have a, another view that gets a little more up close, but this overview, one of them is kind of where you come off the Center Church there, moving down through and then another one kind of.
You haven't fixed that pointer. Can you see there, Chris?
You see it?
Point to the wall.
Emily?
Come down. There you go. Too far down.
Wait, let me see.
Am I missing it? Oh, there it is. Oh, there we go. Oh, I guess, miss it. Right here, this is an access point right here. And then, like I said, here's the second access point here. And then again, we'll get into it a little bit more with a different view, a little closer, but we have student parking will be here. This is the internal bus location here and then we have visitor and staff parking over here. This location right through here is student drop-off. Again, here, bus. Service area is back through here. This right here is just a, a service access through. Stormwater management, we have a, a main point kind of back in here that's kind of servicing most of it. We also have kind of a more natural feature that we put through here. These are just really small, couple-foot-deep pools and then there's kind of rock cascading down through here to another pool, rock cascading down through here, giving that a, a natural look for the stormwater while you're driving into the site, kind of have that nice feature right through there. Doesn't look like a stormwater feature, but is acting as one. And then again, a little one back here. Up here on the front of the page here is two existed, or proposed practice fields and then this here is a parking facility for those practice fields. This connector road here is, is an alternative, potential alternative to connect into that, so that's, that's still potential in planning, not proposed at this time. And then this back in through here is a future development area that's going to be left undisturbed as part of this project. So, wanted to get, again, give you guys a little bit of a more in-depth look of the school itself. The.
We'll zoom in a little bit, Chris.
Is that okay?
Yeah, it should be fine. I was just going to walk them as you drive in the site. So, again, here is one of the main entrances off of the new township road as it comes up through. One lane in and then we have two lanes out, left and right turn there. Again, buses and the parent drop-off would utilize this access road here. We then break them off right about here. We separate that into two lanes, a pass-through lane for the buses as they're going to utilize this area here for their drop-off. And then the parents would come down in the separate area right through here with this loop here to drop off students. And again, this area here is the, the student parking area. Again, this is the, and Mark will get into more of the building itself, but this is the, the main front entrance to the school through here. Right through here, the, this is the auditorium area here. We have a small delivery area there for deliveries for plays and bands and different things like that, so they would utilize that area there. We have this parking or sidewalk that comes down through here. This area right through here is the cafeteria with some outs, outdoor seating through here. This is the learning wing through here with the, the learning wall down through here. And again, as you come up through, then we have, as I mentioned before, this is kind of the service area where deliveries of food and different things like that would come through here. This is gated off for, for security reasons and trucks turn around through here. That then would come up through here to kind of this secondary loop road, loop road that kind of goes down to the practice field parking lot that I was showing before and the fields that are down there. Excuse me, and then kind of would come up back through and tie back into there with the students, student lot.
Want to show us where the retaining walls are while you're there?
I think we have a couple of views that could, yeah, I have this view here that. One of them's shown on this page here.
Hey, Chris, we're going to go to the.
Do you want me to go to those retaining walls?
Do you have both of them now? Okay, yeah. Is that part of this or it's a separate? You made it a separate. Oh, okay.
Yeah, it is separate.
Okay, sure.
But I can bring that back up. Uh, hold on.
I didn't mean to screw up on that, just for sure.
Yeah.
I can't see the other.
Okay, so if we zoom in a little bit here.
Zoom in a little bit.
Whatever.
Yeah, that's, that's the, that's the one there. That's the sixteen-foot height wall there. It's right through here.
Keep zooming. There you go. Okay. It's good.
Yeah, so the reason we have that one there, obviously you can see that kind of hatched area with the kind of little vegetation hatched here. Let's see if it, that, that's a designated wetland that we're not authorized to, to disturb as part of the project, so we had to put a wall there. It's a small wall, it's sixteen-foot at the top and then it peters out fairly quickly. You can see it kind of goes down the hill, down to nothing there. But the, the reason we couldn't tier that up is, you can see, it's right next to the, the one roadway that we have through there, so if we start to tier that back to get six-foot tiers, we're going to be moving that whole parking lot and losing parking spaces and kind of messing up that whole circulation. So, we had that one there. There'll be fall protection on top of that, some type of fence or something on top of that. There's also some conditions on the materials, making sure that it all fits in with the materials of the building, so it's not a standalone feature. It works itself with the site.
But it's going to be more than just a fence, so if a car goes off the road, there's.
Yeah, 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 right. There'll be a, there'll be like a fence on top and then there'll be a guide rail as well.
It'll be a, you know, a cantilever wall, something that's.
Can you give us a detail of that?
Yeah.
We, no, I can't, no, we don't have a detail yet, but we could, we will be, there's a condition for an engineered design of that.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll have grids and it'll be an engineered wall.
Go to the next one.
Go to the next one.
Oh, here, it's over. Hold on, it keeps... Oh, there it is, okay, I'll...
Yeah, yeah, it's right there, it's on the far left. The one corner of the parking, you can see there's some grid, there's a bit of a wall right through there. Again, it's not a very big wall, it's just a pinch point with the site. We have some, the reason we, too, we had some different grading schemes, but you can see the trees that are kind of right up on top of the page there, those are nice big existing trees as part of the golf course, there's a lot of really nice vegetation out there, part of the golf course. We're trying to maintain as many of those trees as possible, so that limited us along the grading. We also have Center Church Road right away to the left of the page that prevented us from moving too far to the left, so that was just a product of a...
Is that wall now, I'm sorry? Where is the wall?
Right here.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just that little corner. So we have the Center Church Road right away, and like I said, we have these trees and different things through here, so kind of, we really want to keep those, like I said, they're really nice trees that really enhance the aesthetics of the site, we're trying to maintain some of those, so that kind of led to a site design pinch point right there that created that issue.
So that's the wall, it's a wall foot.
Yeah. Again, same protections and designs as the previous wall.
But that wall comes from the, from the parking lot up, so you're looking at that wall, the other one, you're...
You're relooking, yeah, exactly. That's correct, yep.
Make sure you understand.
Yeah, yeah.
Go back?
Yeah. Unless you, you guys, okay, I'm...
So that one can't be tiered because of the constriction point to...
The right way of Center Church, yeah.
Okay.
Let me keep it on this one here. I just wanted to get into real quickly just some of the buffering. So currently, right now, there's a creek that runs down through the, right along East McMurray here with a lot of existing vegetation around that, that's kind of this whole area down through here, we are maintaining all of that. There's also a good bit of vegetation up through here, there's a few residents right through here, there's a lot of vegetation kind of backing through here, so we're maintaining all of that existing, not touching any of that, so that's all current vegetation, we'll stay there for buffering purposes. And then there's a fairly large gap between any of the other residents back through here, but there's a fairly large, there's a lot of slope and there's some wetlands in the street, so this area right back through here is fairly undevelopable and so we're not going to be, we're not going to be touching that area either in terms of any earthwork or any disturbance of that. And then, as mentioned, too, about those trees, there's also a lot of other trees all through here that we're maintaining, as many of them as we possibly can. One other feature of the site, there's an existing transmission line that runs right through here, there's a tower right through here, which is kind of why the grading kind of goes like that, we have some setback requirements we have to maintain off of that, but it runs, you know, mostly over the parking lot through there, and we're meeting all of the setback requirements off of that. We're also in coordination, communication with the electric company, they're just making sure that we don't have any issues with clearance, but we're actually reducing grade underneath our lines, so we don't foresee any issues with any of that coordination there. I think we've hit most of the main points of the site, there's sidewalks throughout, mainly from the building, like I said, around the building, three sixty. One other feature, can you zoom into this corner right through here? We have, we have been in coordination and communication with the fire department regarding fire access, three sixty around the building, so this has been designed to where they can utilize the sidewalk, it's wide enough to utilize it, and then they also asked that we provide some of these bigger spaces at different locations where if they need to set the truck and put the legs down, that they would have enough space to be able to do that, so we provided all of this for them and coordinated that with them. So we also had to change the parking lot up through here just to make sure we have truck, fire truck access, you know, we didn't want cars parked right there where that would hinder their ability to get around the building, so we have three sixty access there for the fire truck.
How many parking spots are in the student parking?
Do you have to go back to the introduction? Does it break out?
Yeah, seven forty-six total, three hundred and eighty-six.
What's the car?
Student parking?
So there's more. I don't know the exact number.
I thought it was like two hundred and something, two fifty?
It's not that low, it just depends on how we, how we want to count it, if we're going to count the visitor parking. This is not significantly more, we're still just hoping to accommodate all the seniors and potentially all the juniors because we'll be getting smaller over time, going about fourteen hundred down to thirteen.
I think when we did the traffic count last year...
Can you guys come up to the podium where...
Yeah, I'm trying to film this. Take my jacket off.
For TV.
Stick around. Actually, when we did the original traffic count last year, I think there was only three hundred and ten parking at the time, but then they say sometimes they fluctuate a little over three ten up to, Mark, you mentioned, three fifty, right? So that was what, so there is an increase, and when we did the traffic studies, we accounted for the additional students.
And it says natural turf, is that, so that's not going to be, it's going to be grass?
Yes, yes, the practice fields, yeah.
What's the logic for that from a financial perspective? Because I'm sort of missing that. If you're going to pay, you're going to probably have to do a lot of grass work and earthwork to maintain those, you're probably going to have a lot of runoff there. If you're going to have decent practice fields, why don't you just put the turf in from the start?
So it's financial.
But I think it's sort of backwards thinking because your maintenance of that is probably going to cost you a lot more in the long run than it would just put the turf in from the start.
So we're about four million dollars over budget right now.
Did you guys account, what's the, what would it be to put in regular grass fields versus turf fields now?
So we have that as an open alternative, so if it can become in under budget, then that's what we will do.
But sometimes you think about things sort of like small at first, like maybe you spend a little more money now and you have great fields for the future rather than constantly maintaining, I mean, the soccer fields, the community with soccer fields puts turf up top there and everybody loves them when they had to deal with taking the rocks and all the other things that we dealt with before.
There are a lot of things that we would love to have right now, we'd love to have a stadium up there, we'd love to have terraces open. We're really, there's going to be a board meeting on Monday where we're trying to pull in additional, about two million out of this project. So I think they are thinking all those things, we are doing all the things, irrigation, running the things, making sure we conduct all those things for the things we may need to do in the future, but it really is...
But you think about things like irrigation lines and whatnot to keep those fields in decent shape for practices versus, you know, sometimes you just got to think a little forward. When you're doing an ideal project, you know, maybe you should work with your architects and come up with some engineering ideas.
We're also looking for donors, so if we get a generous donor who would like to turf that field, we're very interested in that and have a very aggressive funding campaign for those kind of things that we can't afford right now.
Just the bus parking, we kind of got to that circulation, there are some additional stalls available in that, some other striping within that that is, during the day, that's dedicated to bus only, but event parking, there's additional parking spaces within that area for any type of events at the auditorium or at the gym, so that could be a dual purpose, too, for parking, like I said, for events.
The other thing is the auditorium, and if, is this plan currently contemplate one? Where, in what position?
This area right through here.
Now, in the event that the town, the school district, I recognize, is trying to some alternative ideas for this, if that goes away, what is in that space?
Nothing. So it's a deduct alternate right now, where they're designing it so that if it gets locked off, it won't look funny. But also, if it needs to be locked off, that we have the potential to put it back in in the future.
Okay, so do the site plans approve for the auditorium right now?
Yes.
Okay.
This is just the grading, nothing related to talk about here other than the stormwater features that we already kind of mentioned as we went through the master plan view and then the couple of walls that we had the waiver request on. General utilities, all utilities available, again, mostly coming off Center Church, sanitary, and then we have a loop that goes around for the water line with fire hydrants for fire protection there. And then the overall landscaping plan, somewhat difficult to read, but there's a good bit of internal landscaping throughout the parking lot and throughout some of the outside seating areas and the learning center, or the learning steps and the cafeteria and those areas there. As I mentioned, the, most of the exterior requirements for landscaping are maintained through the use of the existing vegetation that is remaining. This was just part of the pack that we had sent over with the photometrics and making sure that all the light is contained within the parcel. Some of the details that Ed had asked us to provide there, so I'm going to let Mark get up and kind of just give you a quick overview of the architectural, and then we'll all be available for any additional questions or anything you all may have regarding the site plan and the voting or the school in general.
Okay. All right. Yeah, my name is Mark Delane from what the Hayes Design Architects. We're a partner with Wobber Murphy Fox Architects out of Erie. So together, our firms are working at the school district to design the 298,000 square foot high school. So this view that we're showing here, we're going to show you just a couple of exterior images, renderings of what the school is. You know, we're pretty far into the drawing right now, we're actually in construction document phase and the planning is to hopefully get the project ready to bid in right after Easter and you might, you know, if all goes well, get approval, then all the permits are on board, we could begin moving some dirt probably in June. So this view here that we're looking at, it would be if I was a student, I parked my car and I'm walking into school. So this blacktop surface here is really part of the bus plaza, and that's where, right there is where there was a kind of a drop-off loop for, where the buses would loop around, but this out here was the bus plaza. So I'm a student walking into the school. This right side of the building is the gymnasium, what you can't see is the natatorium, it's actually off the page, it's going to be right here. And the natatorium itself also has a kind of a clear story light similar to this that goes into the gymnasium. This high arching form on the left is the auditorium. So the main entrance as you go into the school is going to kind of take you into a main lobby that has a lot more ample space than there is now in the existing school, and it'd be a big, open space that you'll be able to branch off into four different areas. You'll be able to go to the administrative offices, which are right here along the front of the auditorium. So when you come in, you'll be a secure vest, you'll be able to go right into the administrative offices off to the left, or you'll pass through into the main lobby, and off of the main lobby, you'll have the auditorium off to the left, you'll have the gymnasium off to the right, and then straight ahead, if you were to continue through the main lobby, you're going to be able to look down into the cafeteria and the academic wing is going to be on that, so it's going to, it's going to be this hub right in the middle. If you've been to Beaufort Park High School, there's a lot of similarities here, and it's, it wasn't that we copied that design, it was just really ironic that there was a lot of site features that guided this design. We wanted to keep a lot of the natural terrain that's on the site right now, so that lent itself to a three-story building, kind of nestled into the hillside. And on the backside where we have the academic wing, we have three stories of classroom space. On this side is where the gymnasium could be nestled into the hillside, there's actually a, the gymnasium, the locker rooms and everything are below the gymnasium there, so, and you know, you don't need windows for all those spaces, so it's kind of, it just lent itself into the way it fit into the site.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What's, what did you say is off to the right of where it's not in the picture?
Over here is the natatorium, it's the pool.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the pool.
I missed that.
And there are actually, there's, I'm sorry, I think there was mention of, there's actually two main entrances to the school. This is the main entrance where everyone will go in, there is called an athletic entrance. It's going to be between the gymnasium and the pool, there's a, there's going to be an entrance right about here, just right off the page. So, you know, if there's some weekend events where you just have a pool, the gymnasium open, you'll be able to go in the athletic entrance, they can clock, pop down the front. There's a lot of zoning involved in this building, which is going to add a lot of security to the, to the school and not have it right now, I would go into our school, you go in and there's really, it's really hard to lock off different areas.
If the, like the superintendent said, if they have to forget the natatorium early on, will there still be an entrance to the...
There will, yes, the entrance to the gymnasium will still be over there because that has an elevator to it that's going to actually go down and serve the auxiliary gym. There's an auxiliary gym that's going to feature some seating, so the auxiliary gym's going to have seating for three hundred for, also some competition, but mostly for like freshman sports or, you know, smaller capacity crowds, they could have that in the auxiliary gym, which is a full-size court. But then the main gymnasium right there is, we'll seat about two thousand people.
What's a current gym seat?
Current gym seats, fourteen ninety, but that's accounting for eighteen inches per seat. So if you want to kind of sit with your arms like that, you know, you can fit fourteen ninety, you know. I think that they've said that, right now, the student enrollment is fourteen hundred and they have a difficult time, they can't get all the students to be seated in the winter right now, seating them on the floor and all over the place. And at games capacity, I think that Brian Garrett, the athletic director, said that the biggest game that they ever had was Cannon Mac last year and he thinks they had a thousand people in there. And they, I was at the game, it's pretty, I mean, there's not much seating left beyond that, you could really call them, but this, the seating here, you could actually, if you, also count for eighteen inches per seat, you'd get twenty-three hundred in the gymnasium, but that's why we're saying, it's a realistic two thousand, we think you could get in there.
Can you talk more about the walking through the entrance, or do you have any renderings of what it could look like inside? I really like the security aspect of what you're talking about, you know, dividing the students up, and I'm trying to envision, when you say you're going to be looking down into the cafeteria, and also, did you say you would be able to see the educational portion or will it be...
Yeah, it'll be a hallway going down, it'll be a hallway kind of going down, it'll be a balcony looking into the cafeteria, you walk down that corridor, and if, there's going to be kind of a gateway that takes you into the academic wing, and you almost go through, or I'm trying to describe, as you're going through, kind of, it's tricks you into a little tunnel and then it opens back up. In the academic wing, there's going to be a lot of natural light coming into the skylight. As far as images, we have a meeting on Monday night with the school board, we're going to be showing them a lot of images, so we will show a couple of those type of images before we show the board. So I'd be glad to show you later, once the board's here.
What's the projected completion date ready for students? You knew I was gonna ask that.
Yeah, that's, well, that's, right now, we're, you know, the target has always been the August 2020 year to start a school in the facility. It's a very tight timeline. We're actually thinking of putting the project out to bid with two timelines. One, to still keep that date because that is a very, very aggressive schedule, but it might be able to be met. We're also gonna let the contractors give us their own date for what they think it would, what they really need to do. And, you know, if they can come in lower and keep the shorter date and have it ready August 2020, I'm sure the school district will be very happy with that. So we're gonna kind of play it out as far, again, it's financial and, you know, the project has a very tight budget and, you know, we want some flexibility to make a lot of choices. There's probably a couple million dollars' worth of alternates in and out of this project to give them flexibility to meet their budget.
So there's three stories of classrooms?
Yeah, how, how, in the next picture, this? Okay. All right, so this, this is a view now, if you were driving on McMurray Road. I know there's a lot of trees, so in the summertime you'll never see this view, but in the wintertime you'll see this view. So along, this would be on, along McMurray Road, looking up across the old vaultful 16 that went across right along the road there. This is kind of looking right up, up on a knoll that's right above there. So in site plan, I'd be standing on that athletic field that was right below this. And so there's a difference of grade between the athletic field and the academic wing. The athletic field's gonna be down another, oh, what is it, Chris, 12, 15 feet down below the bottom floor of the school. So there is, there is, this is three stories here. You know, there's a bottom floor, that's the mid-level floor and the upper floor. And standing right down here is about where the athletic field is. So everything terraced is up the hill as we go. This large curtain wall of glass right here, just inside that is gonna be what's called a learning stair. Again, it's a very open foyer with a grand staircase. I think you've seen these in a lot of higher educational facilities where it's tiered seating along, along the side of the staircases. So you can walk up and down the staircase, but there's also collaboration areas that you can kind of sit. You can also teach classes there, kids can just socialize there in classes if they want. And they'll have a view out in, you know, the vista to the athletic field and into the, kind of that, that natural buffer zone that's along McMurray Road. So what's nice is that, keeping that buffer zone between McMurray Road and the school is gonna be really nice, especially in the summer. So you're not gonna, the students aren't gonna be out looking at a bunch of cars zipping by on the, on the McMurray Road, they'll just be looking towards the woods. The materials on the building, I could say there's, there's, there's a total of seven materials, one glass, lots of glass, but there's three different bricks and there's three different metals. And they, they complement, complement each other. The red brick, which we're using just very sparingly at the entrances, at the cafeteria, and then also at these tile lasters, that's a red brick. But then there's a buff color brick and there is a kind of a neutral tan color brick. And so we're mixing those three. Then there's three metals that kind of complement those brick colors. So again, there's, there's really generally three colors, you know, you got the cream buff color, you've got the tan or bronze color, and then you've got the red brick color. So we're blending that and mixing up the brick and metal materials. And then this is a view, if you were driving up the, let's call it the shared road, because it doesn't have a name yet, driving up the shared road, I'm right about, I'm, I'm, I'm in my car right now, just about where the existing clubhouse is, looking to the left towards the school. So you'd be seeing the cafeteria that's in the middle here. This is the educational wing and McMurray Road is off to the left here and off to the right goes further up and you go around the school to the right here is where the main entrance is. You go around the school and you'd be back at the, looking at the, what we wanna call the front of the building is the main entrance. This is the side. This is gonna be kind of a, I think in the site plan, you saw a lot of, how do you refer to those, the terraced, stormwater management? Cascading natural elements. I'm kind of looking across them, but then there's gonna be kind of this open meadow type area. I don't think it's gonna be as playful as we're showing in here because there's gonna be a lot of vegetation. The actual, the cafeteria, it's gonna have some concrete plaza area outside of it for outdoor dining, outdoor classrooms, but it is also gonna be secured with a, with a fence. So there'll be a fence that runs from this corner of the building to somewhere on this corner of the building that you'll be able to go out, outside for dining, but you won't, you know, and there'll be the concrete plaza, but then there'll be some green vegetation beyond that and then the, then the fence beyond that, which we're trying to tuck into the vegetation so you don't really, you don't feel like you're inside a fortress. It's gonna be more natural.
I have a question about this view. From the plans that, in our package, it, it looks like in front of that cafeteria, and you can threaten me if my understanding is wrong, but it looks like there are three separate areas that are going to be walk, you know, walkways or with vegetation in between. Here, there's here, and then it looks, is there a, another walkway here and then another walkway here on the 360 axis?
No, no.
No.
I think that's the concrete plaza and there's a lot of natural vegetation in that where that's where we're like, okay.
I couldn't tell if that was, if that was also. It just seemed overly redundant if there were three separate concrete walkways along that, that edge.
Can I go to the overall presentation?
Who are the 200, try to show it there, the next one? Yeah.
Zoom right into that box a little right.
Did you get your answer?
Yes, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, what we showed you were the three images, you know, we showed you the, what we wanna call the front side of the building, where's the, we're referring to this as the front door, because you're always gonna be part of the entering the building from that side. So the north side of the building, the bridge are actually is the main entrance, elevation of the building. So we showed you that, standing in the student parking lot looking at it. Then we showed you down the further road looking, this is the educational wing, this one down here. Then I showed you one from the road looking back into the cafeteria, the auditorium and the educational wing. Those are really the primary views you're gonna always see. You're not gonna see too much of the, the.
Western location?
The loading area, whatever you want, the service. The service is kind of a triangular area in the back between the academic wing and the main gymnasium, but because off of the cafeteria is the food services right in this middle of the building as well. So what's nice is, you know, the traffic circulation, you've got the main, they've got the shared road looping around the site, you've got the main, the entrances off of the shared road coming in the parking lots. So what we showed you is what you're gonna see 95% of the time. If you were to continue down this access road down to that small parking lot for the fields, you might start to see this other side of the building, but that's why we didn't bring this back.
And the cafeteria is on grade and there's nothing below it?
That's correct, yeah, there's nothing below. Yeah, so the floor leveling starts, this, the academic wing is three levels. The other portions of the building that are two levels is the gymnasium because it has, it's actually a something gymnasium. So you'll come in actually on the top level on a concourse and you'll.
Go down to the seats?
You'll go down into the winters.
So we develop a, design, develop a part of?
Yes.
So when you walk in through the front, you're actually, if you keep going down that hallway towards the classroom, you end up on the third floor of the classroom?
Yes, you're gonna be on the top floor of the classroom, right, you're gonna go down, down into the classroom.
And the, and the cafeteria is on that floor?
Cafeteria's on the middle floor.
On the second floor, okay.
Yeah, the cafeteria will be then serving in the middle floor.
Did all that?
So the way everything works together really works well. Yeah, so the, the two-story features are the gymnasium, I said that there's team roads and locker rooms down below. Also, on this side of the auditorium, on this side of the, this is the auditorium, it's not below the auditor, but on this side of the auditorium, on the upper floor is band and instrumental, but down on the middle floor is the tech ed wing, where we'll have parks and tech edge, fabrication labs and CAD labs. So they're all down there right off, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be right off of the cafeteria. Again, the cafeteria is gonna be the main of it, between the main lobby and the balcony looking into the cafeteria, that's gonna be your public gathering spaces.
I'm gonna go to the overall plan and have Mr. Mudry come up real quick. The township and the school district are working together on the, the shared road and the traffic improvements along East McMurray Road as well as Center Church Road. It's very important that we get those designed and permitted by PennDOT and under construction as soon as possible because the school can't, cannot open until all those improvements are in place. So you could come up and just zoom in a little bit. What are your point with this? What did you want me to, what do you, just hit the, the potential improvements at East McMurray Road, the shared road design and how there'll be left turn lanes into the primary entrances and the, what we're thinking about doing at Center Church Road?
Right, so I, we were here before, I think you guys might have seen a little bit of what we've been talking about. So down at the bottom here, obviously, McMurray and the shared road is what we're calling it right now. Right now, there's still discussion on is around about the best alternative or is a traffic signal with turn lanes the best alternative? And either of those two options from the number, the capacity standpoint work. There's pluses and minuses to each. The number one plus and minus is it's PennDOT's road and you have to get their permission for ultimately what you wanna do. I mean, if, even if everybody in this room said, hey, we want a roundabout, you still have to go to PennDOT and say, hey, we'd like a roundabout, and if they say no, then it's not gonna be a roundabout. So that's one of the main things here. So again.
What's PennDOT's thought so far?
We, we held a preliminary meeting just to say, hey, we'd like to explore a roundabout. Do you see like a fatal flaw in why we couldn't do a roundabout? And they said there's no fatal flaw, but you know, you haven't submitted anything formally, you don't have a traffic study approved, you don't have design plans. So there's a, you know, that's about as committal as you're gonna get from them at this, at this point until you start designing things and submitting bigger traffic studies to them, to show them. And as we talked about here, so the roadway would come up and as we're going up, I think one of the things that we wanna talk about is there are gonna be some traffic combing type features, but that has yet to be determined what it is. We're trying to coordinate, and when, when this goes to design, we'll coordinate obviously what the school's doing on their side and what the township and the park wants to do on their side. You know, there may be some, some locations where, they were talking about tennis courts and things like that on the other side, there's maybe ways that, you know, you might wanna have pedestrians walking occasionally if they're going from school over to the tennis court after school. So that, we can incorporate things like raised pedestrian intersections and, you know, we don't wanna do speed humps per se, but there are other traffic combing things we could do with some medians and narrowings and things like that on the roadway. But then also at the main intersections like these guys were talking about, having left turn lanes, because you know, the school is the big traffic generator right now. It's not, the park's not a big traffic generator relatively speaking. So the big thing to have is that each one of these internal intersections, the lower one that's the ad alternate, the bus and staff entrance up here, and then the student entrance up here, as you're coming up the hill, you know, there'll be left turn lanes into each one of these. Because down the road, obviously, there may be something up here, I mean, there's still 10 acres. So we wanna build a bigger road today to the what-if scenario down the road. We don't wanna come back and rip something up in a couple of years when the big donor shows up, right? You know?
We're going after him.
And, and we, and I think you guys have been somewhat, you've heard some of the process that we've gone through with the traffic. I mean, at one point, there was a potential access right off the back here to Center Church that, you know, as we've gone through the process, we've realized that's not the way to go, because you know how Center Church comes down, this is the unsignaled half of Center Church. Putting a signal there offset with the existing signal wouldn't work. There's sight distance issues as you come over, you don't want traffic queuing right there. I think that's why the, the location down here, and again, this location is not 100% set in stone. I mean, that, where we're showing that roundabout, that thing could move 100 feet in either direction. That's, that's gonna be part of the design when we get into it with PennDOT. The other, at the other end.
Like with respect to the roundabout versus the traffic light, is, so there would be right, additional right lane if there was a traffic light to go dedicated right further down?
To go for the shared road?
Yeah, can you stack?
Can you zoom down a little? Yeah, so, so if you can imagine, this would just be a standard plus or a T intersection and coming this way, there'd be a left turn lane to turn up. Coming this way, there would be a right turn lane, all controlled by the traffic light.
And with respect to the roundabout, there would not be the need for the, the right lane or right lane?
Well, we would still have, so the roundabout, there is a lot of traffic that we would project coming up and turning right here, just based on where the student population is. Like we, that's another thing we did, we plotted all the students versus where the school is. And, you know, more than, you know, almost 70% of the kids are living to the east and to the south. So you'd have a, a single lane roundabout, but you would have a, we call it, it's like a right turn bypass lane. So if you're making this right, you'd skip actually getting into the circle. And, I mean, it, I don't know, we don't, we don't, I didn't bring the, one of those concept sketches that we had, but again, it's a single lane round, it's a single lane going through, it's nothing crazy like the one they built out in 84 with the double lanes going all over. This would be very straightforward and have three legs, a single lane going around it, but again, there would be one bypass lane for this right turn here like this.
That would completely be completely out of the roundabout?
Yeah, basically would run right alongside of it, but those people making that right would never actually get into the roundabout. They would, they would peel off before, go through and then merge back on on the far end. Let me see which, let me just see which one this is. You wanna go overhead?
Yeah, go overhead.
So we did a lot of, as part of the proposal phase for this.
You wanna move it to the middle?
Yeah, tell me where, yeah.
And, how's that?
I can zoom in?
So this is what we're talking, so where we're talking about, you know, these are single lanes coming in, around about here, single lane coming out. There would be a, like a right turn that would skip totally. They'd still yield here on the far end, but they're only yielding at this point, they're not actually getting in the circle and, and going around.
My only comment to that is, just like you say, most of the students and the population is to the right of this.
Right.
That's really gonna, you know, when you're driving down East McMurray, going through there, you're gonna have the steepest part of that roundabout. When you're coming the other way, it's, it's a straighter shot through because of the topography is what it looks, unless that, that round, that roundabout could be shifted towards the bottom of the page more, you know what I mean?
So now.
Kind of split the difference of what you, what going through that roundabout.
So, so, and like I said, that's a, that's a design detail that we'll get into. What I did was, I, we've refined this a little bit. What, what this is showing here is building the roundabout completely offline from the exist, existing McMurray Road. You can see this would be, that's the existing piece down there. And this, building it over here is, there's two benefits to this. One, you can build this without ever stopping traffic on McMurray until you tie it in. And second, when you're done, you can leave the existing McMurray Road here and keep, do something with access here. I mean, this is just an initial brainstorm, but there's different ways, you maybe can make a connection here, maybe there's one down here. This is just showing ideas of how.
That's so you don't interfere with the driveway?
Yeah, if you leave this stretch, you don't have to touch any of these driveways here, basically. Whereas the flip side, if you do the signalized intersection, if it comes down right here, say, there's, because you're gonna be all online, you're not gonna, you're not gonna wiggle the whole road out to here and like this, it's, it's all gonna be built on, on alignment, basically. But like I said, for, for every pro that you can think of this, there's probably a con that someone could think of this design too. So there's, there's pros and cons with both of them. They both work from a capacity number. So that's what I'm saying, either one's a viable alternative to pursue.
More money than the other? More money than the other?
I would think that the, the roundabout is going to cost more because you're building, you're, you're not using any of this here, you're building all this brand new. So if you can, if you calculate the area of all that pavement, that's what it is. It's the area of all this pavement versus basically widening and adding one extra lane of pavement. You know, that's, that's, that's the cost, really.
Yeah, but over time, signaling and all that.
Well, right, and so that's what I'm saying, there's always a, so then if you're looking out, if you do like a 30-year lifecycle cost on something like that, yeah. Well, i- if you build a roundabout, it's a state road, you don't, you're never going to, you don't have to pave it, you don't have to resurface it because it's PennDOT's, they'll do it. But if there's a traffic light, the township owns it. So a traffic light may last 20 years, so you have a replacement cost if you're looking out 30 years, you got a 20-year replacement. And right now, a traffic light's going to cost you about $200,000, you know, 20 years from now, who knows what that'll be, but, you know, there's a cost, and then there's an annual maintenance upgrade and electricity and all that stuff.
Switch back?
Yeah, you want to switch back, unless anybody has any other questions on that, then real quick-
Show's up.
You want to go back to the main site plan? We, I could just talk real quick about the, the upper end, I think you guys alluded to this a little bit too. What we're going to do is, we're going to take Center Church and make that, instead of making that hairpin turn around that power tower there, the power line tower, actually bringing the road straight in front of the church into the site. So the through movement would be coming from 19 past the church and you would keep going into the school slash park area. If you wanted to come down Center Church like, like you do today, you'd have to actually turn at a T intersection at the top end also.
You have to make a right.
You'd have to make a right turn, yes. I think that benefit, that also helps try to eliminate people coming up, you know, driving school or park traffic on that piece of Center Church from the church down to McMurray Road.
But people will be able to come in on Center Church from both sides then?
Oh, yes. Yeah, I mean, you can still do it, but what we're trying to do is, we are trying to get all this site traffic away from where Center Church and McMurray comes together, just because it's too close to that existing signal.
Sure, sure. That makes sense because now when you come in from 19, your, your natural instinct will be to continue straight and go take the common road through and end up at the Rotary.
Yeah, and, and you know, there was some concerns, is that going to attract a lot of traffic, but that's, that's the problem. It's, it's, it's a very narrow area that you have to live in, in the township down there off, say like Thomas Road and places like that, because, you know, if you're going north on 19 or coming from like Upper St. Clair, you're, you're not going to come down to Center Church to cut around to go out McMurray, you're going to take Valley Brook or something like that before you go there. So, you know, there, even though we're building this road and bringing it through the site and putting a roundabout or a traffic light at the end of it, it's not going to generate, you know, all of a sudden, 200 cars aren't going to magically show up on that roadway because there's just, there's faster ways to go besides using Center Church and the park.
Center Church is a pretty current road from there to 19.
Right. And that's naturally limiting on the 19 side too, because imagine if you're going out to 19, you either make that choice, follow that out to that unsignalized or cut over to Gateshead and, and get through that, so.
Yeah, the computer part, you gotta go the old school way and use this.
So I, if you had, and that was really all I had, if you guys had any other questions about traffic, that's, if I can answer any questions you have.
And we were trying to talk about, yeah, the cheaper road up here, it comes the straight through instead of how it bends around today like this. It's going to come straight, and Center Church is going to come through the corner and it's going to tee in at the top of there.
And that's going to work-
Do you want to file any eminent domain proceedings on that road at all? At least on the Center Church side?
Oh, on the Center Church side, we might clip the corner of the church, so I know that there's been some, they approached the church, they don't want to do, we're not going to do eminent domain, so I mean, it's, it's going to be talking to the church for maybe a little tiny corner. It's not, and the way, and the way that the, the property works out, it would be a very small impact on their corner. And if there needed to be some kind of, hey, we can push their parking lot around or reconfigure and help them out, I think that's, I think that's where that would go if, if that moves through. And they'd want to do it amicably, not-
Not eminent domain.
Right, yeah, so I mean, if, if somebody up there was dead set against working with us, I mean, the road would go back to just the way it is, and this road, the new road would tee into Center Church, it would just flop if we can't work something out.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay.
So Planning Commission to review, two things. One, you're approving the site plan, doesn't need to go anything, any further beyond tonight, making a recommendation on those two walls to council.
Is it to council or zoning hearing board?
Council. It's, it's really not a variance, technically it's, we call it a variance, but it's not going to the zoning hearing board. That rule on the six-foot height is in our code of ordinances.
So it's not true?
Correct.
They're calling it variance, but it's really not?
Correct.
Where's the note, the conditions, is one of these notes a condition?
We added, we gave you the new, it's a separate sheet that we set out tonight, not in the book. Emily set on your table there the-
Added conditions.
Added conditions.
Hey, Ed, is the school district the example of the-
Yes.
Traffic impact thing?
Yes.
So we're going to make one.
They'd be 10 million of them.
Yes, so note nine is missed, it starts with 10 and ends on, with eight on the previous.
No, there's nine.
Where's nine? Nine is gone.
Well, nine is just, nine is just still incorporated from the original-
Correct.
Yeah, from the original memo.
Oh, okay.
Nothing changes before nine on the original memo.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the Peters Township High School site plan as detailed in the Planning Commission memo, the Planning Staff memo dated January 11, 2018, subject to the 25 conditions detailed therein.
One second.
All favor say aye?
Aye. And then the wall. Is there a difference? Just, if you're okay with those two walls being over six feet?
I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission recommend to the council that the variance be approved for the two walls that exceed six feet.
Second. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The only other step is we'll figure out what day we go to council with these wall variances and it'll be one of the two meetings in February. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Ed, those plans for the wall would be reviewed, engineering laws.
Yes. One of the conditions that we added was to be, that the walls, the, the engineering design of the walls be submitted to the township. See, you see?
That's the one I was looking for. I'm sorry.
Ed, you want to talk about this water?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so thank you very much for the presentation. We have more business here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. I just think the long way you're over there.
It was, it was.
And we'll start trying to compete with same dimensions for street training.
And it says laptop.
Oh, yeah, you can sit on the outside and watch.
It's weird.
Oh, okay.
Hey, I got Mike Mudry here tonight, again. Can you sit down here? Back in December, Waters Senior Living at the corner of Friar Lane and Valley Brook received conditional use approval. On your place tonight, I put the condition and highlighted it, that is the focus of this discussion. The condition was that the Waters conducted traffic study to determine if a turn lane is warranted there. They did that, I'll let Mike go into what the traffic study revealed. But tonight, I'd like you to hear that synopsis of the traffic study and then make a recommendation to council on how we apply condition four here. So Mike, if you could go and explain what that traffic study revealed?
So basically, we asked their traffic engineer to do a traffic count here at Valley Brook and Friar Lane. We wanted to see if turn lanes on Valley Brook, a left turn in and a right turn onto Friar, were warranted today or if not today, in the future because of their development traffic. You guys all know how much, there's a lot of traffic on Valley Brook, basically. So not surprisingly, in the, in the afternoon peak hour, today, the left turn lane is warranted today. And they're going to add more traffic to that left turn lane, which is the gist of the whole condition and where we got to that. So it's a condition that's met today and obviously it's still going to be met in the future when they add more traffic to it. When it's all said and done and this site gets developed and it's opened, the number of left turns is going to increase. Today, in 2018, without the development, there's 29 left turns in the afternoon, that's what one hour counts. And with their traffic, they jump up to-
Forty.
Forty, basically, 38, 40. So-
Only 40 in an hour?
Forty in an hour. We have so much traffic on Valley Brook that the threshold to meet left turn lane warrants, because coming behind that, so I'll, I'll talk in today's numbers existing, I won't even talk about their additional. So today, right now, in that one hour in the afternoon, there's 29 cars making that left, there's 740 cars coming behind it trying to go through. And at the same time, coming back at them is 486 cars. So there's over, there's 1,100 cars out there right now. So it's a very low number to meet turn lane warrants on, what's the speed limit on valid?
25.
Yeah, so even at a low speed like that, it's very, it's a very low threshold, and I, I looked at the graph, it would only take 16 cars making a left to trigger the left turn lane warrant. We're at 29 out of the gates, it jumps up to 38 with their development, and by the time they're fully open and five years after they're open, it's 40 people making a left turn, basically. So we get down to the end there, you know, we're saying, hey, it meets a warrant today, it's obviously going to keep meeting a warrant with your traffic in the future for them, and they're at about 24% of the left turns ultimately in the PM peak hour, they're going to account for 24% of the, the left turns out there, basically.
So the, now, does that also warrant a widening of Friar for a right out or something like that any other time?
No, it's not, it's not a level of service issue to come out, I mean, there's traffic coming out and they just have to wait. I mean, it's, and a lot of times, what we don't, we don't like putting, and this is something I, I definitely don't like doing, is having two lanes coming out at a stop sign onto a busy road. Because if you, there's places around here where you do see that, but if you can ever imagine a place you've been like that, you know what happens, you're sitting there, you're in the left side and the guy's in the right, he's trying to look over past your car so he can make his right, they creep up, and now you can't see left, so you start creeping in front of them and you, you guys are like, you know. So that's why unless, when we do side-by-side lanes like that, we try to put like a little triangular splitter island so that they have a little separation so they can see around each other. So, so unless it's a real severe capacity problem, and if we have room, we might do something like that with a little channelized right, but it's not a capacity problem.
So the way this condition's worded, you'll see, is that Peters Township Council at its sole discretion may require the applicant to construct the turn lanes. Your thoughts?
I think that has to be done.
Okay.
I think so too.
How bad is the water screaming that they have to do this?
They're screaming loud, because they, their traffic did not trigger it, it's already triggered now based on existing traffic, so what happens?
My thought is if it's, if it's, it's really not the, unfortunately, yeah, they're putting it there, but they're really not adding much to it.
23%.
Yeah, they're 23% of the total, but, and the way that, but the way like capacity and warrants work in traffic, the first 80% of the traffic is great, but it's when you get that last 20% of buildup of traffic, you're, it's kind of like a logarithmic exponential impact. Just a little bit more, 5% more can make, mean 20% more delay, and the next 5% could be 40% more delay. So as you get closer to capacity, smaller increments of traffic make a bigger impact. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, so once you hit a threshold and you're going over, 5% is a big impact, and if you go another 5, it's even bigger.
Absolutely.
Right, so, and that's why we kind of say in Pennsylvania, it's the last guy in's holding the bag. I mean, and that, it's the truth, I mean, every, every developer will tell you that, they all complain, I'm fixing all the problems from-
Well, that's true, I mean, it's always been that.
But it's always going to be that way, right.
Yeah, yeah, if we improve a lot, that person has to-
Yeah.
Get with the times.
Right.
It's unfortunate that that's the way it is.
And you could, in, in any similar street to Friar along Valley Brook is going to have the same issue. These guys are just getting caught up in this because it's actually at the corner of where they're at.
Could it make more sense to have them contribute to like the, a different interchange or to an impact fee?
Well, they're paying an impact fee already. They have to pay the impact fee no matter what. That impact fee goes into the-
It seems like there's a lot of other interchanges I'd rather see upgraded for significant money than this interchange.
Well, so they're paying, they're paying an impact fee no matter what, Ed, what was the?
They're, they're-
They're on for a $46,000 lower impact fee already.
Correct.
No matter what they, no matter what's decided about this turn lane in particular, they, they pay that $46,000 into the-
No matter what. What's your recommendation?
I'd like to see it done too, but I, I'd like to be fair, the fact that they're not, their traffic is, the traffic out there now without that being their warrants to turn lane, I, I think the fair thing to do would be to recommend to council that this traffic improvement at Friar and Valley Brook be added to the traffic impact fee capital improvement program. And as we determine that this project needs to be done and we have the traffic impact fee monies to complete it, we do it. I think there are other important projects on our traffic impact fee program that need to come before this, but I think by adding this to the traffic impact fee capital improvement program, because they, their traffic did not trigger it, it's, it's already triggered by existing traffic. It's a fair thing to do.
Would they be, would they be responsive? I'm just throwing some ideas out for 25% of the upgrade. Yeah, the, put a ceiling on it or something like that?
Yeah.
Be based on projections.
I'm sure that they would be willing to bump up their traffic and contribute to that.
As long as they knew there was a ceiling, they, they could budget it out.
Do we know what this would cost them to upgrade?
$422,000 plus.
We have to give $250,000 to an impact fee instead?
Would you say, Jeff, I'm sorry?
Have a sizable impact fee in addition to what they're proposing and, and give them a pass on this.
I think that's a-
Let's put that money towards projects that really need it.
I think that's a good recommendation.
Follow what I'm saying, because there's, there's so many other interchanges. We could save the developer money, but they contribute extra, and we can use some of that towards some of our other projects and put this down on the list of other projects.
Because this, I don't think, I can't recall, I can't really- So like, we could be charging a much higher impact fee to fully fund the program. But we deal with the reality of what's a reasonable impact fee. So there, the program has projects on there that have a cost, but there's no even impact fee money going to come in to fund some of those. So that's why we have to have that, we have our list of projects, and the projects get prioritized by, like you're talking about, what's the, what's the biggest one coming up, you know, Valleybrook and Bebout. McMurray and Bebout one day is going to be a big one. I mean, these are all projects...
Carlson, McMurray, Smith McMurray, and Valleybrook. So is your recommendation, including the turning lane at the...
I would not recommend a turning lane. I'd give the developer the option, instead of putting the $40,000 to the turning lane, if they would increase their traffic impact fee to, what kind of number would be reasonable?
Well, I don't know that we need, I don't know that we need to put a number on it.
What is it now, $40,000?
Their traffic impact fee that they'd be paying would be $46,000, based on their PMP traffic that they generate. I think making a recommendation to council to add this project to the traffic impact fee and have the waters contribute to above and beyond the cost, above and beyond their traffic impact fee, contribute to our traffic impact fee program.
And by another 100.
Some sort of number.
Yeah, we don't need an hour to, because that can be left to...
Right, to council.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be up to them.
That goes up to council.
Right.
I think that's fair. I mean, I'm with Jeff, and I think, you know, thank you. Because Ed, this is a, this is a nice, this would be a nice addition, but there are so many others that need, need it more than this. And, you know, I think that's fair to the waters to say, you know, you, like you said, it is a logarithmic, you know, that extra 23% is significant. So that, you know, that impact fee should also be significant that we ask, but, you know, to contribute to other projects. But this is not, you know...
So is the Planning Commission consensus added to the traffic impact fee capital improvement program, and the waters contributes above and beyond their required traffic impact fee?
Yes.
Yes. Everybody agree with that? You want to vote, or just?
Do we need to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to add the, add the intersection at Friar Lane and Valleybrook to the traffic impact plan, and also requiring the waters, Senior Living Holdings LLC, to contribute above and beyond the current traffic, current recommended traffic impact fee to the prover, to the traffic impact fee program, above and beyond the current traffic impact fee.
So we're striking the words, add its sole discretion, or we're kind of making...
Well, one of those. This is just your recommendations, and then council...
Great, so it's council sole discretion. You're just making a recommendation there.
Gotcha. You got a second on that?
Second.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
That's all I have.
Should we be raising our, is that the impact fees?
Question.
Should we be raising our traffic impact fees?
We're in the process of looking at that right now.
I mean, from what you just said.
We want to, you don't want to raise it to the point where...
Yeah, it turns everybody off, absolutely.
No, I get it. But we're looking at that currently.
And I really think that this water is a, is a really good project to, at the edge of the municipal, municipal, municipal...
Town center.
Town center, yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
That's it. Meeting adjourned.